Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council Work Session, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. First on the agenda this evening is a presentation from Medco. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening. Good to be here. Appreciate the opportunity to come and present to you this fine day right before the holiday season. I'm Mark Sekman. I'm the President of the Marion Economic Development Corporation. I'm going to go through a lot of information very quickly. If you have questions in the middle of it, feel free to just cut me off and ask questions. Otherwise, we'll do a little Q and A at the end, but I know I've got about fifteen minutes, I think, so I'll go through this relatively quickly. So the first slide I wanted to give you is just an update on our capital campaign. But more importantly, I wanted to talk a little bit about the increases that we're seeing across the field with our economic development campaign for during this over the next five years. As we all know, and I'm very, we're all very grateful for it. Your increased investment in the Medco going from a hundred thousand, a hundred and forty thousand dollars annually to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. So a fifteen percent increase. What I think you're going to see that's really, really cool, I think, is in the past, the city had been about fifty-two percent of Medco's budget. As we stand currently, you're going to be about thirty-three percent of Medco's budget, which really shows us that the private sector is stepping up and being fully supportive, which I think is a benefit to all of us. So again, I apologize for how small this is, but right now, this, this is just a little bit out of date. We have seventy-eight secured pledges at two point two four one million dollars. And then we have meetings that we have not, that we've had, but have not received the cards for requested investment at nearly eight hundred thousand dollars. So we're pushing very closely to that three million dollar mark. As we all know, our goal is three point five million dollars to carry us from January of two thousand and twenty-five to December of two thousand and twenty-nine. So I'm, I'm feeling pretty confident that we're going to hit that mark of three point five million dollars. One thing I do want to reiterate again is one thing that has routinely, routinely come back from all the private sector investors that we've been meeting with is this entire Team Marion concept. And as you see, we have a variety of our friends here with Uptown, the Chamber, and then my coworkers, Emily Russ and Brady Quinn are here as well, but they really like how we collectively and collaboratively as a community, being the Chamber, Uptown, Medco, and the city work so well together, and we're all going in the same direction. And many of them have said, I wish we could get other communities that we're in to emulate what you guys are doing in Marion. So our capital campaign measurables, we've talked about this. Five new business or expanded industrial warehouse or office facilities, creation of three hundred new primary sector interstate commerce jobs. We can go through the whole litany of our, of our goals and measurables, but what we're going to be doing is we're going to be tracking these on an annual basis. So Emily Russ with our team is putting together graphs and charts that we'll be able to provide to the city if they would like those as well. We'll, we'll track where we're at on hitting those goals. So on an annual basis, we will have this, this information ready for everyone that we can give to you on a quarterly basis as well. So Brady Quinn, a little bit about our Business Voice Call Program. And remember, we call this our Business Voice Call Program, which is our BRE, because Brady calls on a business. They voice issues, concerns, or opportunities, and now we have a call to action. So Brady has called on a hundred and sixty, a hundred and six companies here in the Marion area over the last year. When I took over this role, I talked to Brady about what are the outcomes of what we're doing? And he's done a phenomenal job bringing together our party. So for example, ten of those meetings, he brought Kirkwood with us, which has led to forty-six new jobs being funded by the Iowa Industrial New Jobs Training Program through Kirkwood for a total of almost three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If Brady wouldn't have brought those Kirkwood to the table, those dollars would not have been available to those companies. So I think that's a huge win for our community. He also brought Cirrus at Iowa State University and on four of those appointments, which has led to one company going through a manufacturing four point O analysis to get funding for automation. Since then, we just received a, an email for another company asking to meet with Cirrus as well to talk to him about that. So we'll probably see two projects getting funded by that four point O grant. Then our friends at the Entrepreneurial Development Center in Cedar Rapids, that's an organization that works with growing companies that are interstate commerce companies that they view as scalable. So really right in the wheelhouse of Marion, Brady's brought them in on two appointments so far, and they're going through the scalability assessment process as we speak. I think there's an opportunity to bring them in on additional projects. And then again, in the future, he'll be bringing in our utility partners, Align Energy, Lynn County REC, I'm on, and MediaCom. Brady meets with each one of those utility providers on a monthly basis. So we've got a great working relationship with all those entities as well. Marketing and Communications, I wanted to bring this up because one of the things that we're trying to do a better job of is casting a wider net about all the cool things that are happening in Marion. So Emily Russ with our team led this initiative, partnered with the city and the Chamber in submitting an application through the Mid-American Economic Development Council, which is a thirteen state region going as far west as Wyoming and as far east as Ohio. Our project that we, we promoted was the Plaza Project in Uptown Marion. We came in second, not first, but we came in second out of all the states that submitted, losing only to this opportunity in Nebraska where it's a whitewater rafting project going through their river. What we learned from that is there's an opportunity for us to resubmit next year. But we're again trying to get these awards and opportunities so people see all the cool, cool things that are happening in our community. Business attraction. So right now, we are finalists on two projects. One of them is Project Flight. It's a company that's East Coast based, looking at adding about fourteen new positions to Marion. And the pay scale for those are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars for, so very high paying jobs. They're looking about four thousand square feet of office space. They'd love to have it in the Uptown area. So this is a huge opportunity for us. We're working with Kirkwood Community College on the job training program. We've had conversations with both their legal and their CFO out of corporate offices, and they both signed off on this. So we should be proceeding forward with the contract shortly with this project and hopefully getting announcement very shortly on this opportunity. The other is Project Compass. Marion is the only community in the metro area under consideration for this. It's a relatively small project, two to four acres, but fifteen employees and fifteen million dollars in capital investment. They are a large user of electricity. I've talked with Alliance Energy, and this is the only community in their entire service area that they're aware of that's under consideration for this opportunity. They're looking at only locations in Iowa, Minnesota. So that's starting to, to eliminate quite a bit of the competition. I've also talked to Lynn County REC. And they're looking throughout their system to see if any other communities are under consideration that they're aware of as well. Community development. So one of the things that we've talked about in a community development perspective is we feel that there's an opportunity for more medical, and I'm just showing this as an example in Marion. It's not rocket science that we're an underserved market. That's why both Unity Point and Mercy built emergency department facilities in Marion. They understand that we're underserved market. We feel there's an opportunity for those organizations that aren't affiliated with those facilities, OB-GYNs, ENTs, eye surgeons, oral surgeons, whatever they may be. So working with Jill Ackerman at the Chamber, there's a product called Placer, which is really unique in that it actually on your phone can say where you've come from, where you're going, where you go afterwards. She uses it for events and festivals and things like that. We kind of re-engineered it where we went and provided all the medical facilities in Dubuque and in Cedar Rapids. And for this example, it's for eye surgeons. We wanted to see where their patients are coming from. And the, the raw data is showing very clearly that a lot of people living in Monticello and Anamosa go to Dubuque for their services because they don't want to go all the way through Marion to get to downtown Cedar Rapids. And, and communities like Manchester are somewhat split. Now we have that raw data that we're going to be able to provide at some point, once we kind of get it all correlated and put into marketing material that we can provide to these types of institutions to say, hey, if you're in Marion, you have a captive audience because you're much closer to this audience of Manchester, Monticello and Anamosa than either Dubuque or Cedar Rapids. Plus, if you look at just Cedar Rapids alone, we're losing almost ten thousand people that are using those services in Cedar Rapids that actually live in Marion. So you have that captive audience. We'll also provide that data to contractors, developers, architects, financial institutions, anyone that might work hand in hand with these types of companies just to cast a wider net. So I think this is a significant opportunity. We've looked at about six to eight different medical providers services, as I said earlier. So we're going to have this data where we can actively go out and pursue these types of opportunities to Marion. So Team Marion Tracking Document. This is a product that Ryan Waller came to us with as Team Marion. As you know, every Tuesday at ten o'clock, members of Medco, Chamber, Uptown, and the city meet to talk about projects and activities that we're all working on collectively. So this is a tracking document that we are now using, and Emily Russ with our team is, is kind of leading, making sure that it's up to date. And I know that they share that with you. Ryan shares this with you now on, I think, a weekly basis or a monthly basis. But of the sixty roughly projects that we're working on, twenty-four of those projects are being led by Medco. Ten of those projects, Medco is partnering with the city in leadership, and two of those projects, Medco is partnering with the Chamber on leadership. I think that what, what that shows us again is how well we collaborate and work together as Team Marion. We all have our specific roles and responsibilities within these opportunities. But we work collectively. Then the last thing, and I don't know if you guys can read that. I don't know why you couldn't. This is what we call our quarterly snapshot that Emily Russ with our team puts together quarterly. You should have copies at your desk. Yeah. So this is what we provide our board every quarter. This is activities that Medco is involved with in addition to that quarterly or to that tracking document that we, that you already received. So it just talks about things that we're doing on a routine basis, meetings that we're holding, activities that we're engaged with. What you see, I think, is our Q two version of two thousand and twenty-four. And it provides an overview of activities of the five core business units that Medco is being asked to lead, which is community development, business attraction, business voice calls, workforce development, and marketing and communications. I'm happy to give these to you. If you'd like them on a quarterly basis, you're more than welcome to get those sent to you. We'll make sure that Emily provides that to you if, if that's of interest to you. That, my friends, is a real quick overview of what's going on at Medco right now in midst of a capital campaign that's keeping us incredibly busy. So at this point, I'd really just like to open it up for any Q and A, suggestions, or thoughts, or ideas.
Any questions for Mark? Or comments? Go ahead.
Mark, just a couple of comments. After listening to this, and of course, I've been involved with economic development back in the old P one days and all of that with you and others.
Yeah.
So I mean, what I'm hearing from this, and, and I know where Medco used to be and where it is today. So seeing the success, one, of the capital campaign is very enlightening. Number one, I think that is showing the broad support, not only for businesses that are in Marion, but businesses surrounding Marion.
Absolutely.
That have people living in Marion. And that when, first time, the first capital campaign we ever did when I was involved in, that was a very tough sell. So I think things have changed, times have changed. The other two positive things I took away from your presentation, one is I'm hearing better collaboration.
Absolutely.
To me, that is seeming stronger than it was even a year ago. And two, the second thing I kind of took away is making better use of technology in order to produce better results. So those are the kind of the pot, the takeaways I have, and I think, again, they're all positive a reflection on what Medco is doing for the city of Marion.
I appreciate that. Matter of fact, Steve, we have a really cool story to tell that I showed at our, at our board meeting today. And that was an email from a downtown Cedar Rapids based company, never been an investor in Medco. I went and talked to them, and he said it's going to take us a couple of weeks to get back to you. By the time I got back to the office, the pledge form was already waiting for me. And they, they provided actually one of the larger investments that we've gotten. And one of the things that they said is we were sure when you came in here that we were ninety-nine percent sure the answer is going to be no. After you walked us through the process, laid out the plan and the program and the initiatives, and talked about what's happening in Marion as Team Marion, we know that we're going to benefit from this because we have so many people within our company that are choosing to live in Marion. So they, they saw the benefit actually after we got the opportunity to sit down and talk to them. So, you know, one of the things that I have, I do have to say is the Chamber, Uptown, and the city, what's been happening in, in Uptown itself, that's what gives Medco something to market. Without that, that cool vibe and excitement and everybody getting on board, that's what's really gaining all this momentum. So that's why, again, everybody stays in their roles and responsibilities, but we collaborate really, really well.
Kind of keep getting better. Thanks for all your work.
And keep getting better.
Yep. Thanks for everything you're doing. Anyone else? Appreciate it, Mark.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Right on time. Okay, next is Construction Code Review Board. Presentation, Gary and Matt. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. I'm going to talk about the Construction Code Review Board, and Matt Newhouse is going to talk about the, our Nuisance Board. So our board is made up of eleven members. It's, it's designated by our ordinance as what makeup is. We have a licensed architect, engineer, electrician, mechanical contractor, fire technician, and then contractors, actually three contractors, and then the rest of the board is all made up of lay residents. So good, good mix of people. Our current chairperson is Andy Becker. He's a contractor who lives here in Marion. Actually, all the, all the members live in the city of Marion. And then J R Block is our, our vice chair. So the purpose of the board is to hear and decide appeals, decisions, determinations made by the Building Department and the Fire Department. They do actually hear the fire appeals as well. So if the, if the building inspectors or the fire inspectors go out and they make a, a decision out in the field, and it's, it's based on an interpretation, then the, they can appeal an interpretation of the code. They cannot appeal a requirement of the code. So you won't see anything that comes through that would be a requirement. They also help us review our ordinances. So we adopt the building code every three years, and electrical code every three years, unfortunately not the same year. So they will meet to hear that, and what we do is we go through our ordinance and the changes and, and ask them what their feeling is and how they want to interpret that. And then they will make a recommendation that will come to you guys as a council. So our meetings are held monthly. Obviously, they're scheduled monthly. We don't have, have a lot of appeals. We don't have a lot of changes in our ordinance, so we don't meet a lot. This year, we actually had two appeals. We had a pool barrier appeal in, in May, and then in October, somebody trying to, to kind of block a Egress window. So we met that one as well. So that's kind of what we do, and, and our board is always happy to, to show up and do something. So we'll take the rest of it.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. I'm here to talk about, well, my name's Matt Newhouse, Code Compliance Coordinator. I'm here to talk about the Nuisance Enforcement and Property Maintenance Advisory Board. It's kind of a long name, so I generally refer to it as the Nuisance Board. I hear that quite frequently thrown around. We have seven members. All the members are residents of the city of Marion. The Austin Spooner is the chairperson, and Jamie Hoth is the vice chair. The shortest term we have on there is three years as of right now. The purpose of it is to promote public safety, general welfare. They provide a central point of communications and promote harmony and consistency within the nuisance, nuisance abatement procedures. The centralized point of communication is the, the one I use the most with the board. They provide a lot of information for me, whether it's a determination whether a nuisance exists or put me onto a case that I, I need to take a look at. So powers of the board provide direction, interpretation. They conduct hearings, they hear testimonies, and they assist in the, the development of a, a new codes and amendments. Quite frequently, I bring different definitions and terms to them and scenarios, and they provide some good information on that. Meetings, they're held quarterly. Appeals can be scheduled at any time, any process, anytime I, I bring any enforcement to a case, they can go to appeals. Excuse me. We've had six requests for appeals in two thousand and twenty-four. Of the six requests, five of them assume that just taking to the appeals board would, would see the enforcement, which they're incorrect on that. Out of over three hundred registered complaints, only one was advanced to the, the appeals process. I'd like, like, talk about that a little bit. I feel that, that shows extensive efforts and work to find alternative means, methods from staff to to, to achieve compliance. It also shows that staff has worked hard to find assistance through multiple avenues, whether it's through a church function or a, an assistance group. It shows effort to, to provide reasonable timeframes. So I'm not putting the really long or really short terms down there. I'm, I'm letting them have enough time to, to get the complaint done. Also shows empathy and compassion with enforcement instead of kind of a cookie cutter approach, like other communities tend to do. They just fire off paperwork and, and deal with the the, the court cases after that. So the, the code compliance process, the first step is to, to investigate the property. After that, we go to a friendly letter, door knocks, phone calls, whatever means to, to try to get their attention. Step three is where we send out the not so friendly letters, really try to get their attention on that. If that doesn't do it, then we have to go to step four, which is issuance of municipal fraction. If I highlight it, step three, that's where we typically go to the, the appeals process with the board. So the board can hear appeals associated with all types of concerns. We have life, health, and safety violations, which we had three cases last year. That's generally the ones that are going, they're really severe. It's going to be a condemnation most likely. Public nuisance, property maintenance, we've had forty-eight cases advanced into enforcement. Housing rental concerns, we've had eighty-five of those, roughly eighty-five. That's generally a, a tenant, tenant-based complaints, whether it's no heat, leaky water, some type of issue with their unit. Poll grass weeds, we've had two hundred and thirty-seven cases through the year. Snow and ice removal, we've had twenty-three. That's probably not accurate after this last snowstorm or ice storm we had. So that last one, two hundred plus concerns resolved through first contact alone. That's not quantified in the, the numbers above there at all. That's just a, a phone call, that's a, a doorknob, a letter, and it generally gets done after that. It's one and done, so to speak. They still require investigation. It still requires a follow-up, and it still requires having to get ahold of the, of the landlord to, to get it done. So it does include quite a bit of effort there, but it's not quantified in those, those numbers above. So request for hearing. Who can do it? Any person ordered to abate, they can request a hearing. Any interested party on that, whether it's a neighbor with a concern with that. Can appeal whether a nuisance exists or request an extension of time. It's one or the other. It's not both of those. Once they, they figure out which direction they're going to go with that, a hearing can be set, and the applicant is given the opportunity to present the evidence to the board. The board will hear the evidence, decision is rendered on whether the nuisance exists. If the nuisance is found, the board will order that the nuisance is abated. They'll also give an additional amount of time with that. Generally, thirty days to forty-five days, kind of depending on how they feel that day. The board's ruling is the final decision in the matter, and enforcement of, of anything on that is on hold during the appeal process. So I know I went through that quite fast on that. Therefore, I'll give you some time for some questions.
Any questions for Gary or Matt? Go ahead.
Yeah, Matt. In terms of the activity for two thousand and twenty-four, how does that compare to, say, prior years in terms of complaints? And then subsequently enforcement actions. What I'm kind of interested in is what sort of trend are you seeing year over year?
We're seeing plans go out, go up quite a lot. The, the willingness to, and I hate to use the word comply, but the willingness to comply with the, any of our demands. Resistance has, has went up a lot on that.
Okay. So generally speaking, upward trend of complaints based on a resistance of compliance, as you just said.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, guys, for the presentation. Thank you for everything you do. I know sometimes you have to deal with some unpleasant situations, but we appreciate your work. Okay, next item is Brian with the CIP discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is our second presentation on our capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty-six through thirty. This is a, a snapshot of where we are in our budget timeline for the capital improvement program. So we presented on November fifth. We wanted to give staff time. We presented the staff recommendation then, gave about six weeks. I know it's a lot of material to go through, and then this was the meeting where we were looking for some council feedback on the staff's recommendations. And then we would take any feedback and recommendations work towards incorporating those towards a budget work session where, where you would have another touch point. And then we work towards adoption in, in the March, April timeline. So here's some key points on the screen. It's a collaborative effort with all the staff and the department heads. The one thing to note is that the additional capacity, when we talk about that list that's in front of you, the additional capacity right now estimated at about five million. But what we'll do is if council have any recommendations for, from any projects that they see that they'd like to see funded, then finance, we take that, we'd analyze it, we'd work with the department heads. We'd look at the funding sources and the timing, and then we would bring back any proposals for those projects to the budget work session in January. So a great example of that was last year when we looked at when that council came back and said, yep, Irish Drive at the fire station, not traffic signal activation. Yep, we think that's a priority. So staff looked at that. We even, we, I think we had it timed out at fiscal year twenty-eight, and you guys said, oh, like, we want that a higher priority. That's the sort of thing that we would then bring back, and we would watch on that at the budget work session. So really, really want to encourage your feedback here. So a few brief summary slides. The number of projects that are in the staff recommendation, eighty-eight, for a total over the five years from twenty-six to fiscal year thirty of just over a hundred and thirty-four million dollars. The unfunded projects, which, which you'll see in the gray on your sheet in front of you, just totaling over ninety-one million dollars. And then when we break down by category, you can see that transportation is about two-thirds of that hundred and thirty-four million with Tower Terrace, with the portion of Tower Terrace to completion, that's in our CIP here, makes up the lion's share of the transportation, followed by sewer, and then facilities at ten and eight million respectively. And then by funding source, it's worth noting that the majority of the funding of the CIP is actually grant revenue, again, related to, to the Tower Terrace project, and then local option sales tax. So, so the majority of our CIP funding is not funded by property tax dollars here. And then our general obligation bonds. I just over, I just under twenty three million dollars. So these next couple of slides, so we just want to say that this is a snapshot of where we're at the moment. We do realize things are gonna change. We're going to involve council all the way along, there's there's many factors as we gather more information around the debt service on the aquatic center. So here, we just want to show the effects. The debt service capacity here, you can see in the blue and green is our general obligation, annual CIP funding, and we have layered on the aquatic center potential debt, outstanding debt that that layer on there. And that red line there is actually our our fifty percent self imposed legal limit of the state limit, we have our policy in place where we where we have a debt limit of fifty percent of that, that's that red line that you can see. So as our outstanding debt gradually decreases slightly up to fiscal year thirty with the growth assumptions, you can see that our self imposed debt limit gradually increases. And then this next slide, I'm sorry.
If you want to go back a slide, I just want to reiterate to city council, there are numerous assumptions built into this model. So as Brian shared, this is a snapshot in time as we're building this model and more details are coming to light. So for instance, this model currently makes the assumption that we're bonding upfront for all of the aquatic center and the Willowood Pool demolition. As we get further in that process and more details come to light, the model will continue to be updated and it will continue to be shared with city council. So I want to make sure that you're not grasping on to these numbers. But that we want to share it with you and update you along the way as we update the model. I mean, we've been having conversations internally about that timeline as it relates to aquatic center construction. And it gets difficult, as you know, with the fiscal year split across construction season of how much would we bond in one year versus the next year. So I just want to make sure you're aware, this is just a snapshot in time of where we're at right now as we build the model. And more updates will come along the way as we continue planning for the aquatic center.
And so that also ties in, again, many factors when we look at the debt service levy impact with the aquatic center layered on here. So then we come to the, so the projects, so the staff recommendations. So you should have a staff recommendations list in front of you at the bias. The green projects at the top are the projects that the staff has recommended for layering into the adopted CIP. So that's for a total of six point five million over the five years, so that's what staff is recommending. Then the yellow or orange list is the staff putting on their council hat and looking at those kind of projects where we might want counsel some counsel feedback on. So I just want to clarify a couple of things here because this can be slightly confusing. We even kind of worked on it before and we're like, okay, how how do we present this? So with the with the three projects at the top, these are three of our annual programs that are in our adopted CIP currently. Okay, so the R, so those, so those three projects at the top are currently funded. But there were additional requests by the departments in fiscal year twenty six through thirty. So for example, the payment management program is currently funded at three million dollars annually. There was a four million dollar request, we are recommending a two hundred and fifty thousand increase. So that would leave seven hundred and fifty thousand of the rest unfunded. And then the traffic signal program, we're currently funding it two hundred thousand annually. The request was to double that to four hundred thousand annually, we are recommending three hundred thousand annually, so an increase of one hundred thousand. And with the park equipment replacement program, it's currently funded at a hundred and fifty thousand a year. There is no recommendation from staff to increase that, even though there was a request by the department. But at this time, we are not recommending. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then the sidewalk improvement program, we do have a safe routes to school project in there, also in our current adopted CIP, and then the thirty first sidewalk extension at program, so there is some sidewalk in there, that's looking at an annual sidewalk improvement program in the future. And then the community wayfinding, which we have talked about, we do have some dollars in the adopted CIP right now for some park wayfinding to start that process. So that study was already presented to a city council, that would be a annual kind of program at this time because we have the park dollars. And we want to prioritize the best strategy moving forward with wayfinding. Currently, we're not recommending anything to start in fiscal year twenty six with that because we have the park wayfinding project already in place. So I know there's a lot of information, I wanted to pause to see if Leanne or Ryan wanted to add anything before we start any council discussion.
The one thing we'd like to add is as we continue to develop the CIP, one of the transitions that we're making similar to what we've done previously with the pavement management program, where you're now funding pavement management at a certain dollar level, and then we're coming back later with proposed streets. We're wanting to create the similar thing. If funded, that sidewalk improvement program. Right now, we do have the safe routes to school, so there is some sidewalk funding. But rather than calling out specific projects like safe routes to school in the CIP document, when as it relates to prioritizing. We would fund sidewalks at a certain dollar level and then come back with that list of projects, sidewalk projects that would then be prioritized similar to we do with roads, so that helps make it a little more digestible. Same thing with community wide wayfinding, where you would fund community wide wayfinding at a dollar level. And then we'd come back to city council with a list of those proposed community way community wide wayfinding projects that you can then prioritize and and help staff determine which ones get funded. This does help create a more digestible CIP and a better streamlined process for selection. And we're working off our plans.
Okay. Are you ready for discussion?
Yep.
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm not gonna bring up any line items yet, but for for all of us up here. Can you give us a little more background on your earlier comment and saying we have a five million dollar additional capacity, exactly what does that mean and how's that gonna work?
Yeah, so right now in the in the recommend, in the recommended CIP. We have the projects best situated in the years that the department requested. The five million is actually, so between our general obligation, we're trying to stick to about five to six million.
Right.
And then our local option sales tax, we have reserved some capacity there because we know that the CIP things can change. And we also wanted to make sure the council had a chance to weigh in. But that five million over that five years, depending on which projects, we're gonna come back and work with department heads and potentially, potentially shift some projects around depending on the recommendation from city council. But the five million is over the five years with our, what's plugged in for general obligation and local option sales tax.
That's in addition to the recommended.
In addition to the recommended, yes.
Okay.
And I just want to, sorry. I want to clarify that when you were looking at the debt service and the capacity slides. We made assumptions on funding that is over and above what Brian has programmed, we, staff has programmed within the CIP. So like, for instance, there was one year that projects, I don't remember what year and it's not important. But there was about two point eight million in geo bond funding for that year, which left, I don't know, we we programmed around four to five million a year.
Yep.
In capacity, so that's where that additional five million capacity is a combination of that geo bond funding and local option sales tax that's not directly assigned to a project.
Yeah, I think we needed to understand
Yep.
that aspect before we get, because what we're talking about here tonight, all the green items are already included in there. So when we talk about, if we talk about any additional items, they come out of the the orange area or the gray area.
Or the gray, yeah.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's where the five million comes in?
Yes.
Okay, just so Ben understands.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, obviously, if there's any green that you feel highly that there's another project that, I mean.
Yeah, we can still comment on the green one, it's not that they're given, right? There, we can still.
Yep.
Okay, so now, go ahead.
This is just a general question relates to the five million dollars that Steve just inquired about. In all of this, we, separate from this listing, do we maintain a contingency or management reserve to address capital items that pop up on our radar that we have to deal with?
So we ask departments to build in a contingency to every one of their projects. And so, but we also have a capital project reserve. In our.
Mr. Minister, are you asking, well, are we, do we have contingencies for other unknown projects?
Yes, so I I understand the project by project concept of a management reserve or contingency because stuff just happens within a project. That I get. What I am asking, Ryan, is exactly what you described. Separate and distinct from all of this, do we maintain an enterprise contingency, if you will, to deal with something that was completely uncontemplated? But all of a sudden bust, bust forth on our high priority, gotta do it.
That is where the discussions would come, and if a project needed to move because we didn't have the capacity in the CIP. That would be a discussion. We also have a capital reserve in our capital projects fund, so that would be another conversation. Do we dip into the reserve because this set project is a priority? We know that the capital program improvement program is a living, breathing document that things are going to come up. So, yes, we do, I mean, we do have those two strategies for those situations.
Okay, and the first and foremost is, is deal with the emergent and delay or defer something that we were planning to do. Okay.
Anybody have specific projects they want?
I'm not bashful.
Yeah.
And I will, and I may have to defer to our department heads for any specific.
I tell you, the one, the one that jumped, and we've talked about this already in the past, the one that in the orange area that jumped out at me the most. We've talked about this in the past, I know there's already some work being done on it, was the sidewalk improvement program. And because I go, I know we we've done some side pass and school pass, and I think that's great. But there's times where we talk about segments of sidewalk, we had that sidewalk study, which was terrific. And that's gonna take an enormous amount of money to do all of that. But I think having some of this capacity built in to take care of incremental sidewalks that are needed in important areas is nice to have in the future. I think the write up talked about the last time we did this was two, twenty nineteen. So except for some of these side paths we've been doing as far as doing that, to me, that's one of the more important ones, I think, for us to start plugging in. I mean, we're never gonna allocate enough money for pavement management. I mean, we saw those numbers before, we can make that five million dollars a year. And that'll help, but still is not enough, so we can continue increasing that. But to me, this is an area just we have not been doing that I think the city needs to start doing. And then we can talk about later, who pays for it and all of that, that's a separate issue. But to me, it's something that is at least higher on my list of the orange items.
Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, well, dovetailing on that, and I too am not bashful normally. But I'm I'm looking at the gray list. And it is Tenth Street sidewalk and fence replacement. So that's North Tenth Street at the, basically the intersection with Brockman, if I remember correctly. Now, I'll I'll admit that I haven't gone out and looked, inspected that. But I just know it's kind of a problematic area. In that vein, jumping back to the sidewalk improvement program. That one is fifty thousand dollars. Can that somehow be subsumed under the sidewalk improvement program and tackled sooner rather than later? That, you know, and I, again, I don't know what the detail in terms of construction and other issues that surround that particular concern. I I just wondering, is it a safety concern for pedestrians?
Yeah.
And there's a lot of foot traffic that goes that way.
So if the sidewalk improvement program was approved in the CIP, that's something then, like we talked, that we would then come up with a plan. We would, similar to how we did it with the assessment, not saying that has to be an assessment, but we would make a laundry list of here's all the gaps, similar to what Dave has presented, and then start prioritizing that, whether we make a committee, that's council and other people. And prioritize and figure out where are the most, where where can we get the most bang for our buck?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's one that I brought to the attention of staff maybe a couple of years ago, because I walk that way all the time. And that fence is a makeshift, it's not even a fence, it's some sort of a structure that was just sort of devised. And I I think there probably is some safety element to it. And but if it can be worked in. And that's probably not top priority, but I, my question is, are you, are you, are you finished, Grant, or do you have another?
Well, I had another item, but go ahead.
Well, my question is, do we have anything for wayfinding right now that's budgeted in? We do?
For the parks wayfinding.
Parks.
Parks wayfinding was to, was to launch wayfinding, we don't have anything from, specific from the study. But there was already dollars for the parks wayfinding, which was part of the study as well, but.
Okay.
And that's, Mayor, that's when, as Brian said, when we look at the the yellow or the orange, we're putting our council hat on. Trying to anticipate, these are, these are plans that we've we've implemented over the year. And that's why this wayfinding is on that section for some allocation, but we felt that it wasn't gonna be in the recommended section because we had the park project that Brian just mentioned. So just like the safe routes to school and the park plan, we're still implementing off the concept of sidewalks or wayfinding. As we're transitioning to what what Leanne discussed.
I just think we've we've talked about wayfinding for so long and planned for it. You know, I think it's important to, I think, keep making progress on that and whatever we can fit in to to get done. I think it's, it's, it's just gonna improve the curb appeal of the community that much more and help feed the the perception and the and the and the momentum that we're trying to develop. You know, it it says a lot about the community to have that, to have the wayfinding completed, so.
Your Honor.
Yes. Talking about what you're talking about, then I think we need to decide if if parks wayfinding is more important or higher priority than maybe uptown wayfinding or where else in the city wayfinding too, because is, is it? I mean, what, what?
Does that also includes the entryway signs, entryway features and all that?
Any, yeah, anything.
I mean, those are the things I think about is the entryway features.
So anything that's in that report, the the wayfinding study that council approved a couple, several meetings ago. If we, if council says and directs staff to incorporate the funding for community wayfinding into the CIP. After the budget work session, then we as staff would work to go through that plan and develop a recommended set of projects to spend that, those funds to accomplish and continue to work off that plan. And that's where council can tell us the priorities are parks or community or a combination of both. But we'd be working off that.
We didn't need to be more general now.
Correct, just general now.
Okay.
I I I agree that wayfinding is important. And again, we, we, the city has invested a tremendous amount of money improving the uptown, improving everything throughout the city. I think the one. I think the one aspect about that line item that I look at, and I, I know we had some past discussion and presentations on wayfinding, is I would hope we'd be able to find a way to do wayfinding for less than 2.8 million dollars. To me, that is a pretty large amount in that entire area, and I hope we can be, either find a way to reduce that, become more efficient. So I don't know that, if I, if you're asking me to support a 2.8 million dollar wayfinding thing right now, to me, that's too much money in that bucket.
We wouldn't ask for the full 2.8, but, but if, if council was to pick just some number of that 2.8, so that, just like the annual program where we would continue to work on prioritizing. And I, if I, if I'm remembering correctly, that when our consultant came and presented, those were very yeah, high up numbers, and, and I, and I, if I remember correctly, Amber or Mike was talking, we would go through the prison industry for a lot of the signage, which comes at a much lower cost. I mean, so we would follow our purchasing process and go through that. But, but again, the, the key is, like with the pavement management, the signal program, the park program, the sidewalk improvement program, the wayfinding, even the tree replacement program, we've now have all these plans that have all these recommendations. If we have the general high level dollar amount, then we as staff would go back, work off the plans, incorporate it into the city council process to get the feedback with a full set of projects. These are the projects we'd like to use to spend over the next year.
So I think they're looking for categories now, you know?
That's fine.
We would like to
That's fine.
Do some work on this category, and then they would come back with what's doable, with a, with a recommendation for the actual dollar amount, what's doable in, in the budget, and, and, and what pieces of it can be done.
It, it, what it does, I mean, that, that, that is a process that we are transitioning, transitioning to as we continue to develop our budget process. It increases the transparency with the community. It takes the pressure off the council of trying to make these really big decisions right now. We can get the funding, and then throughout the, the rest of the year, we continue to work with council to get the feedback on where to best allocate and hit these projects based on what you're hearing from the residents that you're elected to, to represent.
Gage has mentioned the Hannah Park bridge. Is that out of, out of commission now? Is it not being, so maybe that's one that's important, right?
Yeah, I can talk about that. That's something that came out of a council office hours visitor, actually, that mentioned that, that, that bridge, a couple planks were missing, and then as we went and looked at it, found out it was completely out of commission. I think it's one of the lowest cost items on our yellow. I think it belongs in the green. It touches multiple points of concern. I think from an accessibility and safety angle, I walk in that area a lot. Multiple times a week when I'm over in that area, I see people just kind of go under and cross that little creek anyways, whether it's just joggers or walkers, people with their dogs, like they're still using that route, even though we have the signs up about the, the bridge. It's also the only easy walkable accessible point for that whole neighborhood to, to get into that park. And as we continue work on the, the Seymour Trail, there kind of is a, a loop there connecting Grand Ave, and people can continue to take that path on Sixth Street across that pedestrian bridge. I think we've put so much investment in the rest of Hannah Park with the new pavilion, new restrooms, the soccer fields, the new playground equipment over the last few years, that it's kind of, it just kind of makes sense to, to fix the, the very visibly broken part of that park. And yeah, I think getting it done, and it's just doing it the right way is, I think, is, is completing this project as soon as we can.
Did you have another?
I, I have a difference.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, well, I, I'll just endorse what Gage has just said. I mean, there's a reasonably li- large neighborhood immediately south that is disabled in accessing the park in the absence of that bridge, so I, I endorse that. The other one in that general grouping, utilities, art in the alley extension. So my understanding is that is basically utility work. I, I may be the only person in this room as an old utility guy that thinks three-phase transformers hanging on a pole is, are, is a thing of beauty.
Okay.
I digress, but that, that is just ugly. And so the question I have is, is how can that, how can that project be accomplished and accelerated and get the full participation of our utility members? Because maybe that's cleaning up a, a bunch of mess that they would rather not have to contend with in repair. So I, I just have an interest in trying to do what we can to move that one along. I think everybody just needs to know that is, that 205,000 dollars is utility-specific work only, correct?
Correct.
So it's nothing out about the aesthetic attributes or anything. It, but this is a precursor to doing that kind of stuff later.
It's an important component that sets the stage.
Yes, it's important to get the utility portion out of the way because that is the portion that takes the longest time in working with, in this particular case, it would be Alliant Energy. We continue to touch base with Emily, who, Kaiser now, who's our representative for Alliant. This is a project that they would be very engaged in, and it's important to get this in their timeline as well because it takes a while. So it really, the lining up of our CIP along with, with theirs works well.
If I'm sorry, really quick, Councilman, just to jump onto that, our, our friends at the chamber are here, and I know council has been receiving communication from chamber members in support of the Art in the Alleyway initiative. When they're communicating, it's really supporting this, this particular project.
If you have something? Well, that's the other one I was going to bring up.
Okay.
But I guess I'm going to bring it up from a different way, other than to say those transformers look pretty. But what I was going to look at this is really looking at this in maybe two phases. So to me, you've got, you've got the alleyway between 11th and 12th and 12th and, and between 12th and 13th Street. So to me, it makes sense to go ahead and consider on a more immediate basis doing between 12th and 13th, since we already have the LOFTS project going on. And as long as that's going on, maybe we can piggyback and do things more efficiently. Do I want to see them both done eventually? Yes, but at least between 11th and 12th, we don't have a vision, at least in my opinion right now, on how that's going to be looking or what is going to be happening with the alleyway between 11th and 12th. So if for any reason we need to cut that in half, I would pick 12th and 13th, since we already have, and we talked about that related to the LOFTS project, that might, that might make sense to consider that as kind of part of that project as well.
Okay. Will, and then Sarah.
I also agree that the sidewalk improvement program, I would like to see that included into the CIP. And then I question, in the green, we've got the demo of the old Arctic installation building and the removal of the tent storage structure, and I'm questioning why those are high priority versus sidewalks or something else, or a bridge over a creek.
Yes, some, I can help answer that question as well. With the, the, the building that's next, it'll just be south of the, our public works facility, just to acclimate people. This is something that, when we were discussing whether we continue to lease that particular parcel, particular building, there was a lot of damage through some of the derecho, the, the leasing did some repairs, those types of things, but really just did them as a temporary repair. So I had our building department go out and take a look at it to see what it would cost to repair that. It's at the low end 35,000, at the high end it's 50,000 to get everything up to par again, and then to also do the, the safety, like the exit signs and those types of things, to make sure that those are working. The other part of that that we talked about with finance was also the insurance and the liability that the building has just sitting empty at this moment in time. And certainly is something that we talked about with the overall plan of what are we planning to do with those particular parcels in relation to the public, the old, the old public service building.
So my question too is if, if that parcel is going to be sold off, if there's a need to spend 50,000-ish dollars to demolish the building if it could be sold.
Yeah, I think that's a conver-
Being sold as a, a vacant land, being sold with a building on it.
Yes, yeah. What is the best route? And that's something that, you know, we need to have more conversation in regards to that as to how we parcel that off.
Well, and, and the staff's recommendation is to have it included for demo for the reasons that Kim mentioned. I mean, whether or not that remains in, that's a council, I mean, that's, that's the feedback that we're looking for council. We do have, as, as Kim mentioned, we're going to be having the conversations, developing the plans, and having those conversations with council to receive formal direction on what to do with that site in the future. But from the standpoint of the liability and the, the exposure and the insurance costs, staff's recommendation is that it be included for, for demo, but
Would it make it more marketable?
Again, it's, I'm sorry.
Would it be more marketable without the building there?
Yeah.
Good question.
I mean, depends on who's looking at it.
Suppose that decision can be made at the time? That you sell it?
That's, that's kind of where I was going with the whole, why are we knocking it down now and spending 50 grand where it could?
The thing I will-
At the time of when it's going to be, the land's going to be sold.
Thing I want us all to keep in mind is we have no guaranteed sale date of when that will occur. So when it comes to maintenance of those, those maintenance costs will remain. I mean, obviously, the building's not being used, but that means we then need to make sure the building is secure. If there's any storm or anything, we, we have to be constantly checking on the building to make sure it's maintained.
All right, and your maintenance cost might?
Yep, so I-
What's that cost?
Completely up to council's decision, but I just want to make sure that you keep in mind that maintaining the assets mean we need to maintain the assets. So if any storm occurs, obviously, it would be an insurance claim, but there's a deductible that's associated with that for value that in, in some years' time may end up being demoed anyway, but that's, again, council's decision.
Is that the same reasoning for both, both of those?
Yes.
Demoing and removing the tent storage facility, structure?
Is, and the tent storage is for the ice melt? With that tent storage? And then where's the ice melt going to be stored now then, if that's demoed?
So there's two art structures out there. One of them is our standalone salt building. The other is the east part of the actual building facility that's structurally deficient. So the one that we're talking about demoing here is the one that's structurally deficient.
The, where the vehicles and everything are stored.
Yes.
Fire.
Yeah.
Right now, it's additional salt storage.
Gotcha. Sarah?
Just going to kind of concur so you know where we're all at. I concur on the Hannah Park. I, I agree with, on the Hannah Park piece. I totally agree on if there's a way to even get started on the utilities, Pete, and the piece in the Art in the Alley. When I look at the amount of people that gather at our events and see that as a drawing point and reasons are really recognizing the development around that, the more that we keep that momentum going. And having been involved from the first alley project and seeing the change and what that's done, even if it's part of it to get it started, I would like to see that bumped up. I concur with Will. I have questions like, is there a company that could come in and salvage those, would want to salvage those buildings that would save us some of that cost if they could take away what's there? I don't know the business enough, but that would be great. And then, of course, always an advocate for sidewalks also on the wayfinding, because I feel like we've done all this work on wayfinding. It's been a conversation piece. I hate to see it just get, continue to get bumped back and bumped back until we end up with it's, our study's out of date and we have to start all over again, so. Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at on some of those with, with questions.
Okay, so maybe we should do it this way. Is there any strong opposition to the Hannah Park Bridge replacement? Everybody's would be okay with that added, or, okay. The Art in the Alley Utilities work? Even at some level to start to lay the groundwork?
What Steve was proposing, this split, is that even an option?
I wouldn't recommend that just because if you think about it, if you have lines buried here, then lines buried here, those lines have to come back up in the middle, and it makes more sense just to bury them all together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then think of that.
Yep.
Yes, I have a question on that.
That's all in.
Go ahead.
With that, Kim, you were talking about the timelines and, and how long that type of project would take and timelines lining up with Alliant and, and any development happening in the area. What, like, how long does that type of project, how long would that project take?
We need to get started now.
Okay, so that's, okay.
Yep, the next couple of months. At least as far as like the design work and the, no dollars exchanged, but we need to get the design started with Alliant.
What would that overall, what do you think that overall, though, like timeline, in terms of actual amount of months?
Um. I think it, from what Emily had shared, that it is really about a six-month project. It doesn't mean, although it's a six-month project, that it is cutting everybody off in the use of like the parking lot and that. So we can work around those kind of things, but it'll, it'll take some time.
Ju- just from my perspective, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, but not only is there the core utility work by Alliant, but then there is the building
Yes, connection.
Specific work, they're changing their entrances from overhead to, to take an underground feed. So there's some building by building work that has to go on.
Correct, and communication with those property owners and whether they need to put a new meter in, those types of things. So there's a lot of communication that needs to happen within that time.
Okay, I'd be on board with, with that?
Yep.
Okay. Then we have community wayfinding? Start to implement it at some level, just in pieces?
Yeah, I'm okay up to some dollar amount.
Well, we'll get the, we'll get to move that when it comes back.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Yeah, go ahead.
When it comes to that, no offense to parks, but maybe it should be looked at if, if it's something that we want to prioritize, the park rate wayfinding versus something else to begin with.
I, yeah.
Because I'm not 100% sure what the park wayfinding project even is right now, so maybe that's something that needs to be discussed.
Yeah.
To see if that is.
I mean, I, I already said my priority is the entryways. I think we've talked about those for 20 years. You know, we've invested in these, in these plans. We need to implement a mechanism of, you know, implementing the, the plans that we invest in. And, and I think it's a, it's a big part of what we're trying to do. But, so I mean, if, if it was reallocation, I, I would want to reallocate it towards entryways, but I'm not the only decision maker, so. Did you have something, Brian? I'm sorry.
No, I was just-
Oh, somebody did.
Yeah, I was just going to let you know, the, the park wayfinding is really just a park entryway sign, so a lot of them went missing during the derecho and are absent from that. So it's really replacement of, of all those is, is really what the project is.
And not covered by insurance?
No, no, these were, these were past its end of life, so it wasn't ones that, it's just much like the fencing for ball diamonds, so.
Okay. Would we be okay with some level of wayfinding? Again, we'll get to review and we'll get to comment, and, okay. Then we had some support for sidewalk improvement program? Would we be okay? Pavement management program? Steve, no?
At this level?
No, not this, at some level, like.
So it's annually funded at 3 million right now. The staff's recommendation is 3.35, and the department had requested 4 million.
Okay.
Sure, so I don't know if you want to talk to that, Mike?
Yeah, so that's just based on, if you recall, we set a PCI value of 61, so based on Jake putting that number into the model, what, what dollar does it take to get us to that and keep us to that? So that's what that dollar amount is. So it's not, yes, unlimited money would be great, but we realize that that's not realistic.
Didn't we, just a couple of years ago, increase that from 2 million to 3 million?
We have been stepping it up, but we have a lot of catch-up to do.
Yeah, I understand that, so, but we have been stepping it up. So we're now at least up to 3 million, even though 5 is better. Or, yeah, so about, yeah, there's a, yeah.
Three, three, two, five. Three, three, two, five, three million two hundred and fifty is what the next, what's in their nap.
About the recommendation.
Yeah.
So it's just another.
Right.
Two fifty, yeah. Okay. And then do we need to get consensus on the demo, the two demo items? What's the consensus there?
I'm, personally, I'd be against taking down the Arctic insulation building right now. I think it's more of a, do it based off of what happens with that parcel.
I, I see the argument though for safety and ongoing expense of, of. Security and making sure that it's secure and safe while we market it and. Um, so I don't know, I guess in, in this case, I'm, I'm willing to defer to the staff's recommendation, but go ahead.
I was just going to ask, did someone throw out what that annual maintenance cost was? Or does someone have that or?
I had asked about, I don't know if anybody heard me.
Oh.
All I can say is, you know, we have turned the, the heat down with, we have it so that we're not freezing pipes in there. Um, police and fire have gone in and done some practicing. Um, so it's minimal. We're keeping it down as much as possible, but we still have to pay insurance. We still have to pay utilities on that structure.
We can, I mean, that's a follow-up item we can get.
Okay, yeah, I think it's just good to know.
Any strong feeling, I know, we don't, I guess Will has strong feelings. Anyone else have strong feelings?
No.
For, oh, Randy, go ahead.
I guess I'm going to chime in. I, I'm an advocate, you know, we, we have a nuisance abatement and we also have, or excuse me, our nuisance ordinances. And we also have our vacancy policies. I think the city's got to follow our own policies on that. So. This hoop building, as it continues to get deteriorated and that. Plastic and vinyl starts to shred and it starts to flop around in the wind. That is not where we need to be. These are items that need to. If they're beyond repair and they do not bring value to the sale, I think we need to get rid of them, bring it down, put it back to a shovel-ready. Piece of land and get it back on the market if that's what our, our direction is. But. From an insurance agent's perspective, these are nightmares that we just don't need to be having that liability. For maintenance, you know, it's hard to put a value on it today, but when pipes break and we've got water issues and we've got rats and mice running around through these things. Those are, you know, we're, we don't want that of our residents and we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be doing what that, um, that whole policy is about. But that's my opinion. So I'm going to be in favor of keeping it as a priority to get these taken down if so. Um, i- if that's the movement for that.
So anyone else, uh, have strong, strong feelings for removing those items?
Can I just say something?
Go ahead, yeah.
The, the old storage building, the tent building, that, knowing that that's what you're talking about now, I'm okay with that. It's just the other building that, I don't know why, if the water's on, why is the water on? Why is it not winterized? I mean, why would we be paying water and everything for it right now? It's, if it's going to, as far as what Randy said too with the. The policies that we have in place, but if it's going to be going up for sale, then it's within our policy that it's, can be a vacant building and. Everything's off if we're actually going to be selling it. So I still in favor of that not being. Done.
So that would be the Ar- Arctic insulation, insulation building? Is this, is that installation or insulation?
Installation.
Installation.
Insulation. So there, there's a misspelling in that. Okay. Um, okay, anyone, so on, I guess on that one, that's the, that's the last remaining one, the demo of the. Arctic insulation building. Buildings, is it multiple? One, another typo. Okay.
Mayor, can I ask for clarification? Are, when we're talking about Arctic insulation, there's two buildings that they occupied. Is that correct? Or is there one to the north and one to the south of the Bain Drive that goes back to the compost? I'm a little unclear. Because didn't they occupy both of those buildings? If, if that's what we're actually calling it? Okay, and who owns or do we own the building that's on the south side of that lane?
It, it, somebody else owns that.
That is not, okay, that is not owned by us. Thanks for that clarification because they were both labeled as Arctic insulation. I just wanted to make sure we had clarity on who owned what buildings. Okay, thank you.
So is there anyone who feels strongly that that demolition of that building should be removed from this list? Besides, besides Will, anyone else? Okay, I think you have the consensus on everything.
Yep, that's all the ones that are on my list, yeah. Good.
The mayor did a really good job of summarizing, but I want to reiterate back to you to make sure that we've captured it correctly. Um, adding Hannah Park Bridge Replacement, the Art and Alleyway Utilities, Community Wide Wayfinding. And, and staff will have a conversation about parks wayfinding as part of that when we bring a recommendation back and sidewalk improvement.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, really quick. So council will see this. In a recommended form based on that, this direction that we had at the budget works, work session at the end of January. Council will still have an opportunity to adjust it, like as Brian mentioned, the Irish Drive. After the meeting in January, that would essentially be the final direction and then it would be a part of the approval process. So council has, will have one more opportunity to really dive in or pine on it before the official vote happens out thereafter.
Will, so I'd bring up one more thing about CIP.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, this is not in the current CIP, but I wanted to bring this up. And the, I would like to see this be added to the CIP, not this year, but it may be next year. But at least get it on the radar to be added is the twenty-seventh Street Roundabout and Sixth Avenue. We build it with a leg going south, twenty-seventh to connect to Fifth Avenue, and that is still not in here. I have no idea when that's planned or was even talked about to be planned, but I would like to see that added to the CIP here soon. Uh, so that that connection to that neighborhood to the north can be, the connection, the neighborhood to the south can be connected to the north and to the road there. The Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue. Thank you.
Duly noted. Go ahead, Craig.
Can I ask one last question? Um, I was, I was wondering as well too, you know, as we talk about this bridge in Hannah Park. Are we doing? Are we doing what we can or should be doing to identify some of these items so they're coming up a little bit more? Transparent, like this bridge. I feel like this bridge just like popped up overnight where we've got it, it's not usable. We've pumped a lot of money into Hannah Park over the years. How did that get missed? And what are we doing to be more proactive so that maybe that bridge should have been on a forecast for maybe three years from now? Um, et cetera, et cetera. That's just, I'm using that one as just an, as just an example, but. In all of your departments, is there anything that we're missing that should be on a little bit more of a radar and not cropping up to Grant's point of saying? Well, we kind of really have a nine-one-one now on this bridge because we've, pedestrians are using alternative measures that. Is, is changing what we're really wanting them to do. So with that, I'll let somebody chime in.
Yeah, so what we're doing is, um, as a requirement for DOT for vehicular bridges, we have to have them inspected every two years. Um, and so what we're doing with that, while we have a structural engineer here, uh, in the city doing that inspection. We are doing some of the pedestrian bridges and so we're not doing them at the same frequency, but we're starting to do those inspections and add them as part of that program. So they're not, um, inspected to the scrutiny that a vehicular bridge would be, but at least we're getting some data on that. Rather than just waiting for them to collapse and then dealing with them.
Right, and that's exactly to my point. So if we were to go backwards, would, if we would have inspected that or if we did two years ago. Would that have been on our radar back then, two years ago, to have put that on the forecast so that it would have maybe been gray? Versus green? And is that something that we're proactively doing to date? And I'm not, I don't want to pick on the bridge. But in all of our departments, is that something that we're making sure that we're having a global view on, on all things that we should be looking at?
Yes. That's, that's what we, we talk about repeatedly with the departments. We continue to talk about continuous improvement. We continue to look at our work plans and how we're going through our process and how are we becoming more efficient. Um, so that is, that is an ongoing everlasting process that all departments have been challenged on and that is something we talk about. All the time.
Perfect, great, thank you. I just wanted a little bit of conversation on that so that, um, I was clear on, we're actually, we're doing that. So thank you.
Brian, did you need anything else?
I think we summarized it and, uh, we'll get to work.
I really appreciate, um, the conversation that went on here today. I think this is the most in-depth we have ever done this. Uh, and the most engaged council has been and most collaborative that we've been with, between staff and, and, and. And, uh, the council, uh, appreciate the council's openness, uh, the staff's openness and being willingness to listen to our. Our input and our thoughts and ideas on, on these things. And I think that we, we, we're working together very well to, to just, uh. Take care of our city and, and, and to, um, keep moving forward. So thank you so much for all the work that's gone into this and that we'll. Continue to go into this, so.
Yeah, and Mayor, I'll make one other comment that came up in our check-in meeting with, uh, Agent Will and I yesterday. And that is, I think as, as a whole, as a city council. There is being a lot more interest and discussion in the CIP, uh, for two reasons. One is the dollars in the CIP has grown substantially i- in the several years I've been on city council. So the amount of dollars is increased a lot, which I think puts everything in a higher area of importance. But the other thing is with the positive momentum that the city has had over the last five years. Everybody at city council gets more comments, more questions about CIP projects and issues or. What's going on over here or what can we do over there? And so I think the CIP has become. Much more of a, a city discussion area by citizens. And to me, I, I think that's a great positive on, on everything that the city has done over the past several years.
It's a great sign that we have engaged.
Yes.
The residents and the residents of this city are, uh, very interested in what we're doing because they're very proud of their city. And they want to see it continue to improve. And so now they have ideas and they have questions and they're not, they, they're not sleeping here only. Uh, as there was a time when a lot of people just slept in there and didn't really care what happened here, but. Today they're very engaged and they care about what happens in our city and then that's, that's the result of a lot of intentional efforts to. Engage residents on the part of the city and the, and to make them feel like that, that, that their opinions matter and, uh. All around, it's great. And the, the methodical way that we are doing things now, um. It, it creates the environment where we can have these types of discussions and, uh, and all feel confident that we're going in the right direction. So. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to our agenda review. The first item that's marked by staff is A nine on the second page. Are there any items to discuss prior to A nine? Anyone have questions on anything prior to A nine? All right, we'll go to A nine, Leanne.
I just really wanted to bring the council's attention, um, because we had passed the twenty twenty-four multi-family housing urban renewal plan. Wanted to also bring it out to the public that two of those eight residential buildings have been built and the application's been filed. And that's what council will approve on Thursday. Um, so you can see in the picture on the left, one of the buildings. Um, as it relates to the pond and the building, or the picture on the right is showing the two buildings. That are next to that pond. And then if you look further up on the picture, you can see the three lots and then three lots. So. You can kind of see how that development is starting to come to fruition. And I just wanted to celebrate that and, and point it out for the public.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Okay. Thanks, Leanne. Uh, next item that's marked for discussion is E one. Any item between A nine and E one that. Uh, requires discussion, questions? All right, we'll go to Dave with E one.
Uh, yeah, this is just a public hearing set date, uh, so the item would be in January, but this, you received quite a bit of correspondence over the last several months since the annexation. Just wanted to make you aware that by setting the date, notices will be going out. There may be a loop tick and, uh, questions, comments, concerns being, uh, brought to your. Uh, to your inbox. Um, so just want to make you aware that we are setting the date, um, and then it'll follow the Plumb Ray Platt in, uh, February.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thanks, Dave. Kim, you have the next one?
Yes, I do. Um, this is a hotel market feasibility study. We had went out for an RFP. We received. Two, two quotes on those. Uh, one was not, did not complete fully. The RFP, there were some documents that we needed to have, um, a little more detail and sign off on. The other, uh, reason why we, why we really went with Core Distinction Group two is that they can actually come on site. The other firm that we had was, um, not located, um, they were located in Florida and wanted to be able to do the work virtually. We really, our group really saw, uh, the committee that reviewed those studies really saw or see the value in having. This group come to our community and meet with our developers, meet with our business community, meet with council, meet with staff. And our business community as well and really get a better understanding of what is going on in our community along. With looking at current hotels we do have today. They then will assess the need for additional hotels, what that would really look like. Um, I really, uh, love that they will really break down and put performance together, make recommendations of hotel locations. How many, how many, um, rooms in each hotel, those types of things. So a lot more detail than what we did ten years ago in a hotel study. Uh, so we come with a recommendation for, uh, that you'll approve then on Thursday, uh, for Core Distinction Group at. Uh, cost not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred. Oh, yes, the other unique thing about this study too is that they will, um, it can be in two phases. So as they're doing their research and talking with people and, um, and getting really down into those details, if they don't see a need. In additional hotels, they will stop midway. Um, and then that would be all that we would, that we would pay them at that time. Uh, but they would come and, and share that information with us and give us all of that data before, um. Before moving forward with the performa, the hotel locations, those types of things.
Go ahead.
Tim, does, will this, uh, scope of work be, uh, focusing citywide or at targeted areas within the city? That would support that kind of development?
Yeah, they will look citywide. They will also be looking at adjacent, or adjacent communities as well. Um, they will look at aging of hotel, of nearby hotels or current hotels for aging. There's a variety of things that they will look at to make the determination.
But that examination to neighboring communities is diagnostic then to support defining a need here?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Well, did I read correctly that this would be completed by the end of January?
We, we said end of Janu- January twenty-fourth are negotiated. Um, when I talked to them to let them know that I was bringing this to you, uh, we're going to meet on Thursday again, but it, it more likely will be the end of February.
That's quick.
Yeah, it is very quick. But we'll have, we'll help them line everybody up and get everything and we'll reach out to our friends at the Chamber and Medco to help us with that as well.
Great. Well, I'm looking forward to the results of this. Um, I think to many of us, it's a no-brainer that we need more hotels. This is just going to be able to help us make the case with investors, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep, thank you. Um, the next item that's marked is on the last page, which is, uh, under the regular agenda, A one. Any, any item prior to, anything on the abstention agenda that needs to be discussed? Okay, Leanne?
Thank you, Your Honor. On Thursday, city council will hold a public hearing and also be, um, considering the approval of a development agreement with DCI. This is for property adjacent to City Square Park and the future Central Plaza. It includes Broad and Main Seven, which is already constructed, located at eleven oh seven Seventh Avenue and Broad and Main Six. To be constructed as in the development agreement by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, located at eleven twelve Sixth Avenue. This, uh, new development agreement is very similar to the prior development agreement that we had, um, that has since. City council has approved a mutual release of. Um, the team from DCI group is here. Um, you can see the incentive that's being proposed on the screen. Uh, a grant of three point five million dollars. a grant of $3.5 million and a rebate stream of $3.4 million. As it is next to the, um, and this is the original project. The project has not changed from what was originally proposed under the previous agreement. Um, here is a rendering of that building, uh, right as it abuts against the Central Plaza project. And I know that Jake wanted to talk a little bit about the collaboration with DCI Group as it relates to the construction of Central Plaza. And we do have the DCI Group team here. So if there are any questions for them, they are here.
Yeah, we'd love to have, have them, um, speak if they'd like to, but, um, go ahead, Jake.
Okay. Uh, in anticipation of this agreement, I've been working with Renderneck as well as DCI to coordinate, um, how this development, especially for the Broad and Main Six building, will coordinate with our ongoing Central Plaza work. Um, share the screen here. Um, DCI will need approximately 30 feet from their west property line um, to have for construction staging, access, forklifts, readying structures, uh, constructing masonry on that west wall, that sort of thing. Um, so with that, it is in the best interest of the city as well as DCI to forego the install, installation of the remaining paver areas. That's within that approximate 30-foot area. Um, at this time, we, um, will then execute a change order with Renderneck to deduct that from their scope of work. Um, look for that to come forward sometime in either January or February. And then we would have a memorandum of understanding with the DCI Group to add that scope of work to their project. With that, so this is basically the area on the left of the red line shown on the screen there. Um, so the pavers that are installed, uh, to the right of line, um, and along that red line, there'll be a chain link fence installed, um, for their construction access. We'll work with Amber to get the screening installed on that fence. During their DCI's work, um, basically for the interim, the, it will look as it is today, um, essentially gravel storage area or staging area for construction access. Um, so just wanted to bring that to your attention now. Um, it's in our best interest to coordinate that. Otherwise, all those pavers would get destroyed and have to be taken out anyway. So.
Makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for Jake? Go ahead.
Two. First one, I'm assuming that does not affect the, the, the money that we're getting, the grant money we're getting for this, since it's not going to be totally complete.
No.
Destination Iowa.
Yeah, it should not impact that money.
No way.
Okay.
And then were that, that area where the, you said the pavers won't be installed, were those the pavers that were, uh, paid for?
Yeah. So we have those on, yeah, those are on hand, sitting on the old library lot currently. So, um, those will, will, I'll go through our agreements to have those changed hands for DCI to install those with their subcontractors.
But it's so that, that session, that was the inscribed.
Oh, the donor pavers.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that where those are going or?
The donor pavers, it, it might be hard to see on the screen. Um, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but in this area here is where the fire tables and a masonry pier is. That's where a majority of the donor pavers will, will be going. That will be part of Renderneck's contract still.
Good.
So the area that's covered in orange on the screen right now, that's heating blankets, um, that's scheduled to get paved yet this week. And then they'll be working on finishing those areas up for the donor pavers and that sort of thing as we continue with that project.
Okay. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
I want to come up by myself. This is Mayor Council members. Thank you for letting us come tonight and be part of your Marion community. It's always enjoyable to reach out to new communities and tonight I want to introduce myself. I'm Dennis Frischmeyer with DCI Group. I brought two of my partners, Kevin Kane, Kevin's our C, CEO, DCI Group, and Chad Lutnick. Back here, he's the president of DCI Group. Both have been integrally involved with this whole project throughout the course of time. And before I kind of give you an update, where we're at on this whole, uh, project and getting this thing kind of to the completion, um, I just want to make a couple of comments. Um, first of all, we probably have spent more time, energy in meetings, minutes for the last year and a half, two years, trying to figure this thing out and trying to structure appropriately so we could actually kind of get it to the finish line. And every time we'd get there, we'd kind of get discouraged. I called Mr. Waller and I just said, hey, I can't, we can't get this thing figured out. The numbers don't work, loan structure doesn't work. This thing just, it's just not going to work for us. And Ryan would come back and say, you got to figure this thing out. You know, this part of our community is pretty important. You guys got to get this thing figured out. So. We'd go back to the drawing board. We'd try to redesign, try to come up with new loan structures. We tried to bring in outside investors, inject equity and just with the law part of this whole thing, um, they always told us like, sorry, we're not interested. And once again, I can make the call to Ryan and say, hey, we're out. We just can't do it. And so then Kevin, Chad, myself, Adam Carper, our CFO, and Ryan, we're talking and finally we just said, why doesn't DCI Group just take this over by themselves? You guys got money invested. You obviously got a lot of concern about your subcontractors. We want to make sure they're treated fair and get paid accordingly. And so we thought, let's just, let's try to figure this out ourselves. And so the patience, the work and the help of the city that we actually got to where we are today. And so I'm involved in two other developments and two other communities, um, both those communities, the dollar volume is, is much larger than what we have here in Marion. Not as important to the city as what you have here, but nonetheless, a dollar is much larger. And if I could take your city staff and move them to those two communities, we'd start construction to spring. I'm 100% convinced of it. You've really got a, an outstanding team here. We'd be in foreclosure today if it wasn't without them. I can tell you that because they really have been, uh, the voice of reason as we've worked our way through this project. So I can't thank them enough, um, for having the patience and kind of working with us as we worked our way through this whole process. So I bring you where we at today. Um, I think when I came in, I told Gage, I, I feel like we're bursting goal on the two-yard line. Unfortunately, we're down by four. So kicking a field goal is really not an option and we got to move it to over the goal line. And we think we're really, really close. And, um, when this meeting started, our attorney was talking to um, one of the other parties involved in this whole process and those two attorneys were talking, trying to resolve two points that we still got a little bit dispute and trying to resolve, and both of them were covered in prior legal agreements. So they really shouldn't be disputed, but they were. And I think we're, we're really, really close. The text we got tonight indicated that we're closer than where we were when we came here. So we feel like by the end of the year, we, we should be able to get this thing closed, get it transferred over to DCI Properties and hopefully start construction in 2025. So once again, I really appreciate you guys working with us. You've got an amazing community. We're not really experienced in the Marion community, but hopefully on a go-forward basis, you'll see a lot more of us. So thank you.
Thank you very much for, uh, sticking with this and, um, finding a way to make it work. It's, it's, we're really, uh, grateful for your interest in it and I hope that, that, uh, ends up, uh, working out. Uh, we're very encouraged by what we just heard. And, uh, we look forward to having you be part of our community.
Super. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Yes.
Leanne, I think I brought this up maybe at our last, um, cycle of meetings, but the development agreement has some milestones that, um, I just want to make sure that in the total milestone schedule that we're kind of watching this project come to life, that anything that's appropriate in the development agreement is reflected in that same schedule. So we don't have to play eyeball ping pong between the project schedule and the development agreement. So whatever's important in there, please include it in an integrated schedule that we're looking at.
Thank you, Grant.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. All right. The next item, um, is D1, Mike.
Yeah. So this was, we're going to have a public hearing on Thursday regarding the, the public safety training facility, and this is the actual Burn Building. So right now, the, the other building is being constructed. Uh, the bid that we received had some irregularities to it. And so legal is currently working through those. So what we're going to ask for on Thursday is that we have the public hearing, but we leave the public hearing open while we work through that stuff. And then at the next set of council meetings, then we can have action on that and we'll have the continue of that public hearing.
Okay. Is that clear? Any questions? Okay. Um, any questions on E1? All right, um, before we move to the closed session, I just want to, um, ask for, for a brief moment of silence. Um, as we all know, our team, um, lost a member of our team this week. Uh, Mark, Mark Jormo. And, um, I think it's appropriate to have a moment of silence and remembrance of him. And, um, uh, I just want to say I appreciate all the support that, uh, everyone's been giving to, to his family. Um, and, um, it's a sad, it's a sad loss for all of us. So, uh, my condolences to the department and to all the, all the staff. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, yes. May I move to approve, excuse me, may I move to adjourn to closed session regarding a real estate transactions as permitted under sections 21.51J of the Code of Iowa?
Sorry. To move in second to adjourn to closed session is permitted under the Code of Iowa. Can we have the legal counsel statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, Section 21.51J.
Any discussion or questions before we vote? Vote call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Missman?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Assley?
Yes.
Ms. Mensah?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. We're now adjourned to closed session.